Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, correspondence received from Pennsylvania Economy League dated November 16th, 2021 to City Council, Mayor, and Business Administrator regarding 2022 budget. 3B, correspondence received from Licensing, Inspections, and Permits Department dated November 16th, 2021. 3C, minutes of the non-uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting held October 20th, 2021. 3D, agenda for the non-uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting held November 17th, 2021. 3E, minutes of the composite Pension Board Meeting held October 20th, 2021. 3F, correspondence received from Thomas J. Anderson and Associates, Inc., dated November 15th, 2021 regarding the financial requirement and minimum municipal obligation, MMO, for the City of Scranton's pension plan for 2022. 3G, minutes of the Ethics Board Meeting held October 20th, 2021. 3H, minutes of the Historic Architectural Review Board Meeting held October 14th, 2021.
Thank you. Are there any comments on any of the third-order items? I have two. First, in the composite pension meeting minutes from October, Mr. Volenberg, it mentions that there was an email that made the board aware of a miscalculation in the MMO that council approved in September. Can you inquire about that and find out what the miscalculation was? It's not clear from the minutes, and I don't ever remember receiving any official correspondence making us aware of that.
I will, sir.
And the second thing I wanted to mention very quickly is 3A tonight is the projections that, in the budget letter that we got from the Pennsylvania Economy League. Every year that we receive the budget, they give us their, how our projections or how our budget was in comparison to their plans. And I am very concerned about some of the projections that we are way off of where they had projected. In terms of revenues, inter-fund transfers, 340% over what was budgeted. Other non-tax revenue, 198%. In expenditures, pension, 20.5%, other employees' expenses, 16.5%, capital expenditures, 120%, non-departmental expenditures, 132%. I'd like to reach out to the Pennsylvania Economy League, Mr. Volenberg. Usually, we have a conversation or a caucus with them prior to the end of the year. Since we are on the cusp of exiting Act 47, I think it would be good to have that final conversation with them before the end of the year. So if you can reach out to them and see if they'd like to come in for a caucus to discuss this letter and our looming exit from Act 47.
I'll reach out to them tomorrow, Mr. Gahn.
Thank you, Mr. Gahn. It seemed like with some of the CBAs and with the healthcare, there possibly could be a change in some of those numbers.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. That's all I have. Thank you.
That's what I want to say as well. Happy Thanksgiving. Hope everyone spends the holiday safely and with family.
Just to add to that, because of the Thanksgiving holiday garbage collection for the Thursday and Friday pickup will be a day behind.
Thank you. I just want to take a second to say something about our former colleague and a good friend of mine and a lot of ours up here and former council members, Bob McGough. Former mayor and former council member Wayne Evans used to speak of Bob McGough on the anniversary of his passing, which was November 19th, 2015. And it's been six years since Mr. McGough had passed away. And former Mayor Evans had read Mr. McGough's words that he spoke at this council meeting when he himself was going through a courageous battle with cancer. So I want to take a second to keep that tradition alive because we all think, and I think so highly of Bob McGough and all that he did for our city. I just want to take a second and read his words into the record on the six-year anniversary of his passing. And Bob McGough said, "Just one thing I would like to mention. I would just like to say that I know all of us have been affected in some way by this insidious disease, and I would just encourage that anyone that knows someone who is fighting this or dealing with treatments involved with cancer to be a friend. One of the things that happens to cancer patients and those under treatment, depression is a very significant aspect of it. And believe it or not, simply sitting down and talking with people, going, watching a television show, bringing dinner and having something to eat with them goes a long way to helping people deal with that. And I would just encourage that if you know someone, please be a friend and be a part of the helping process." And those were Bob McGough's words. He was such an inspiration to all of council when I sat here next to him and he was fighting that battle with cancer. You would never know it. He showed up. He dealt with everyone with grace and with honor and with courage. I learned a lot from him. I was a new council member in 2014, and I learned really how to be a council member because of all the things that he did and he was able to show me along the way. So I wanted to just take a second, as my former colleague Wayne Evans did, and honor him and hope that we can all remember him in our prayers and his family. Thank you. Mr. Volenberg?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
And the first speaker tonight is Joan Hodouanets.
Joan Hodouanets, city resident. Any update on the audit?
We're still waiting for the sewer authority.
Okey-dokey. I have very mixed feelings about the way the 2022 budget is going right now. Last week, I downloaded the draft or the proposal early on Tuesday morning, and that plus Pell's document, and spent the rest of the day going through both of them. And been going to the various meetings with department heads, and then tonight with police and fire. And I beat Larry West about the head and shoulders tonight because I'm a little bit frustrated. He presented to you a number of changes, which I have not been privy to, and I hope that you plan to put those in next week's agenda. I asked him to attach a memo explaining what happened with the pay raises and how that affected the budget, because it's not self-explanatory if you just look at a spreadsheet. Which brings me to a few comments about transparency, full disclosure, and fiduciary responsibility. Sometimes I feel like I'm chopped liver. Now granted, I sold my property last year, so I don't get a property tax bill per se. But you had better believe that Mr. Charlie Jefferson factors his property taxes into my rent charge. So I do pay property taxes indirectly, as does every tenant in the city, or you have a very stupid landlord, which I do not. But, you know, trying to keep up with these budget projections and to do my own due diligence as a citizen, it's like we haven't learned much in the last 10 or 20 years that we can't wrap our arms around this octopus called the budget process. We don't have an audit, so we don't have auditive financial statements for the year 2020. We're basing it on 2019, which is pre-pandemic. We've got to get that thing changed. We've got to get the sewer authority and every other authority to get on the same calendar year that the city is in so that you can all get it done. And then, you know, we've got four union contracts under negotiation. And it's very possible that their contracts are going to expire before those contracts are resolved. And worst case is that they go into arbitration because you know what kind of record the city has when these things go into arbitration. So I'm trying to feel I have reliable figures on which to assess what's happening with the budget, not just next year, but the next five years. And the numbers are shaky at best. On top of that, 3A, Mr. Cross's document about reviewing the proposed budget and that it meets the goals of the exit plan. But it's based on the October 24th version of the budget. So has anybody sent him all these changes, or do you plan to send him all these changes?
Well, we plan to get in contact with them because just as frustrated as you are, Ms. Hodouanets, I've never been this frustrated in eight years on city council because the same mistakes that were made last year were made this year, so...
I wasn't privy to the process last year because I don't do Zoom because I'm too cheap to have the internet. Because I'm paying rent to Mr. Charlie Jefferson who's charging me for his property taxes. But be that as it may, I have to compliment the city on this process of bringing in the mayor and the department heads. I think that was excellent. And I hope that goes on till the end of time. And I think Mr. West is doing a very good job considering that he was dropped into this process in the middle of the year. And he's inheriting something that somebody else started. But my God, we've got to do better than this. You know, we're like the Keystone Cops. And I don't care how we do it. Do a car wash and I'll pay for it, but we've got to do better in this process. So that's my frustration for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Les Spindler.
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Last week, I didn't make it here, but I watched the caucus and the council meeting. And what caught my interest was the OECD director saying that they might have to take a look at the rental registration ordinance. And I've been saying that for I don't know how many years. Because every year, even though I'm exempt from registering, I still get a form that says I have to register. And this year, I called and spoke to Director Olefsky. And he said, "Les, we talked about this last year." He said, "Don't send it in." And he hung up on me. So I'm not sending it in. But the way that ordinance is written, even though I'm exempt, I still get that in the mail, and I shouldn't have to. It's a waste of my time to fill it out. It's a waste of the person's time sending it, putting postage on it. So as I said before, it should be rewritten. And I would like Attorney Hayes' opinion on that. If he could pull the ordinance up and see what he thinks it says. I'm sure he could pull it up in a couple of seconds before I'm done talking even. Next thing. Driving around the city in my retirement job, delivering auto parts, I come across a lot of areas I usually don't see. Last week, I was at a red light at Sanderson Avenue and Olive Street. To my left was the old all-phase electric building. All the windows in the front, it looks like they were recently busted out. The place is a mess. It's just, it's an eyesore. Across the street, just up from there, was Perfect Alignment Building. That's no busted-out windows, but it's just an old dilapidated building. I'm just wondering if we got all these developers in the city, Charles Jefferson, Basaliga, Russo. Maybe the city could talk to one of these people and try to develop these buildings. Maybe get a business in there instead of just doing apartment buildings. It looks like a slum area right there on that corner. So maybe we can try to get somebody to develop those buildings and try to get some businesses in there. I think that would be a good thing. Lastly, last time I was here, I spoke about the DPW supervisor who was on my corner, painting lines all over the corner and everything. And that's just where I live, the whole corner. And he said, "They're going to get it done before the cold gets here." I said, "That's fine." Well, I'm starting to have my doubts because the cold is here. I still haven't done it, but I'm sure they're busy. And if it's not done till spring, you know, I guess I could put up with that. But hopefully, we'll get some nice weather before the snow flies. But at least, you know, at least I did come up and look. I had that problem for years and years, and a lot of times, they wouldn't even come up and look. I guess I have to be satisfied whenever they come up and do it. That's all I have tonight, but I want to wish everybody a happy, healthy Thanksgiving. See you next time.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Next speaker is Fay Ferrantis.
Fay Ferrantis, Scranton. Could you hear me up there? I can't tell with this mask.
Yes, we could hear you.
Thank you. I normally wouldn't be anywhere because I haven't been out in like two years. But this is so important to come here and speak about this budget and what's going on in the city. I haven't left my dog, Emerson, ever, so... Hi, Emerson. He's watching. So anyway, I wanted to say that I really, really want to thank the mayor for getting us out of the stress, working with you, council, and administration, business administrator. It's a wonderful 22, 29 years. I don't know what it is, but it's decades. And with her guidance and your guidance, we're finally getting out of this. Normally, I wouldn't say we need pay raises. But you know what? When I look back at the way the city's been run under past administrations and mayors, we had people that were hired that were friends of the mayor and friends of this person, friends of that person, instead of qualified, intelligent people. And here's a deal breaker. When you interview people, say from Park Summit or Troop or anywhere, for a job, once they hear they have to come into Scranton, which they know, but once they hear the salary, that's a deal breaker. They won't come because the pay isn't enough. That's why I am with Mayor Cognetti in saying these pay raises are very important to get the best people, like the Human Resources Assistant Director and the Finance Chair Takeover $80,000 for PEL, which is very important. I think that's very, very important to get the supervisors and the department heads raises. They deserve it, especially if we're going to get top-notch people. The city is turning around. It's a new beginning. Here's another thing. This friend of mine, Jason Lebraski, who lives in Carja Valley, called me this afternoon. I was so pleased to hear this. He was in the corner like by Lafayette and Dewey or something, and he came across these men that were working on a pipe. I don't know if it was engineers or the men that were working with them. They were opening up, they're going to open up a pipe. Remember Lenny Serebo comes here all the time complaining for years about flooding in this home? For you, you know this, Mr. Gahn, council members. So now, because of new competent management at the DPW, this is getting done. I think this is wonderful. And I'm sure everybody that's been in council and heard Lenny come here all the time, he must be very happy. Now, another thing I want to talk about. History, history in the making, as far as I'm concerned. This Rubicon, this new technology, I think it's wonderful. I was reading the RFP, and it says that with this, there's going to be more efficiency. There's going to be more optimization in collections. There's also going to be fairer distributions, the route distribution for the truck drivers. So I think everybody's, it's a win-win. So I know my guys that collect my garbage, they're the best guys in the world. My sisters, everybody loves their drivers. They do so much for them. They really should be appreciated. Christmas is coming. Don't forget them at the holidays. They really do a wonderful job for us. Now, another thing I wanted to bring up, the supervisors. I understood, last week, I was impressed when I heard Mr. Preambel come in. One of the things he said that I wrote down that I thought was excellent, he said, "Without monitoring, nothing gets done." What does that tell you? It tells you that you need supervisors. When I worked at the water company, I had a supervisor. Without him guiding me and leading me every day, I wouldn't get my work done the way it should be done. They are super important. So I think, like Mr. Preambel mentioned, I believe that the Parks Department and the Highway Department does not have a supervisor. That's very important to do. So I hope council, in their budget, in their thinking, realize that this should be done. And please give these departments supervisors. I can't stress enough how important this is. I wouldn't be here otherwise. This budget is too important. I want you to trust the mayor and believe what she's saying, and that she will hire competent people. I think everybody should get their raises because they deserve it. And even Mr. West last week, who stepped in for the Parks Department and gave us all that information because the department head wasn't able to be here. But everybody's working together. And we're seeing so many improvements in this city. So would you please consider these budget recommendations and please pass them? Let me just check and see if there's anything else I want to say here.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrantis.
Oh, was my time, oh, my time is up. Mr. Gahn, I just wanted to say to you, I wish you all the best when you leave, and I hope everything goes well for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next speaker is David Dobson.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton. Okay. Once again, I'd like to remind council that televisions are piling up in the courts, and that's a county thing, or was, until they decided they weren't doing it anymore. And along with televisions, cardboard boxes and stuff are not really being recycled to their proper... If you have a family, it's time to start worrying about them. In 10 years or 15 years, maybe I won't be here, so not my concern anymore. Once again, I'd like to remind council that there are some nonprofits kind of having fallow operations that they're probably not paying 10 cents worth of property tax on. Like I mentioned, up at the top of Linden Street on West Side, a bunch of cement blocks laying around in the yard. It used to be owned or operated by fine old things, and they're a religious nonprofit. Well, that's fine and dandy, but that neighborhood's a mess, and they're not doing anything with it. They should either decide what to do or give it back to the city or whatever they want to do with it. Now, with a lot of the expansions of nonprofits and tax-exempt entities like courthouses and state buildings and stuff, we, once again, we're lacking money that we should have. And I'm not bashing them. I'm not bashing the university. Not bashing hospitals. I was just there today. But it would be interesting if the state would offer some kind of compensation for it, even like half. We would have millions and millions of dollars to deal with it. And they do benefit people from outside the city. If you get sick in Abingtons or out towards Madisonville or wherever, Covington Township, you're headed to Scranton. And by the way, we don't have a pediatric surgery unit in one of our hospitals, the old Moses Taylor. They have to be shipped for an appendicitis to Lehigh Valley. Is that not crazy? I mean, that's insane if you ask me. And COVID, once again, it's over 100,000 a day. About 1,500 people a day die from it as we speak. And as I see my doctor last week, my regular doctor in primary care, he went to a wedding. His whole family came down with COVID, and they were vaccinated three times. So until people get off their Diddy box and get vaccinated, like I said, I'll take two. They're small. You know, I'm on my third. I'll take two more. They're small. You know, so it's just important that people get off their Diddy box and get vaccinated because it just keeps piling around. And a little thing on the environment. Last year, and I'm pretty sure it's available on the internet, Michael Moore put out a film on the various failures of alternative generation of electricity, like solar power and windmills and stuff like that, different applications like that. And I mean, maybe there's been some improvements, but it's something that everybody should watch. Because they are clear-cutting forests, chopping them down into chips, and sending them in ships over to Germany. And Germany was given an award for the wonderful alternative energy they were generating. Well, cutting down trees isn't the answer. Thank you. Have a good evening and a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You as well. Have a good night. That exhaust sign-in sheet, would anyone else in the audience like to address council this evening?
Good evening, Council. Normie Jeffries, Scranton resident. And the first thing I want to ask about, and maybe it's me, but each week that I come to council and Ms. Hodoranis, Joan, gets up and talks about the audit, what is the reason as to why we don't have it on? I know you mentioned something, Mr. Gahn, that you're just as frustrated as Joan is. So for myself and all the others sitting out there who watch council must wonder, what is the reason? Can you give us a reason? Does the audit company get penalized for not coming forward? Do they get, you know, what's in it for them that would make them come forward and complete this audit? I don't know because I have enough on my plate to keep my little budget together and audit my checkbook. So as Joan, it comes up week after week after week and asks about the audit. I wonder, and I'm sure others out there in Scranton wonder, what is it? Are they being penalized? And what can we do, council do, to make them come up to the plate? And I certainly hope they don't have another contract for next year to do the audit for the city of Scranton.
So what we've been told is that they're waiting for, the audit company is waiting for an audit of the sewer authority to be completed, correct, Councilman Donahue? Because that's a component of our audit, to look at their financials as well because they have not yet been dissolved yet. Because there's still outstanding judgments that have to be resolved. So that, I think, at this point is the only holdup, if I'm not mistaken. Kyle, if you want to add anything else?
Yeah, so the contract that we did give, that was given out four years ago, it's for four years. So there is another year on there. But I know that Attorney Hayes is reviewing the current contract and developing ways going into next year, how we strengthen that, especially, you know, certain deadlines and having a hard deadline in the contract.
Because I always think, you know, in my working days and on, we had meetings like this, and you'd come to the table with your status on your projects. And believe me, if I kept telling my boss, "It wasn't ready. I'm waiting. I'm waiting. I'm waiting for this," I wouldn't have had my job very long, you know? I have to come up with an action plan as to what I was going to do. So that was my first thing. My second thing is, I guess this is like an advertisement for the light show at the Neyad Park. It's up and running. It's up and running. It is fantastic. If you have not been to the light show in, say, the last five years, you must put it on your agenda, on your calendar, to go through the light show. It starts at 5:00, 5:30, and runs to 10:00 at night. And it is just fantastic. And we've done a great thing this year. We've tried to represent all of the different denominations in the city that might be celebrating the holiday around Christmas. So, we do have the Kwanzaa, the Merry Christmas, the Hanukkah, and, oh, I forget the other one. But, you know, we have represented everyone. So, there's a lot going on up at Nell Park and during the light show. And I just want to give a shout-out to all those that are working to make that happen every night. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address council?
Marie Schumacher. I guess tonight's frustration night, I've been frustrated, well, a long time with council, but a week from tonight, on what is not happening on Wyoming Avenue. Council heard Cipriani, Ms. Cipriani, say that the property owner is causing the delay by adding a number of things that probably are not possible. And the mayor said, "They keep moving the posts." So, it's the property owner slowing the process. What I want to ask you tonight is, did any of you go directly to the property owner and ask for his list of demands during this week?
Well, that would be inappropriate, because we are legislators. We, there's no law that we can pass to make this happen. We've highlighted it and tried our best, but it would be inappropriate, Solicitor Hayes, if you want to correct me if I'm wrong, for us to go to a property owner. Yes, us individually.
Okay. The clock's running. Thank you. I got the message. You didn't do it. Now, I have learned that the property owner's solicitor has tried to arrange a meeting with the city solicitors on numerous occasions with no return calls. Now, this taxpayer is requesting that it's time that you invite both the city and that property owner to a caucus, to a meeting, and get this straightened out. This has been going on far too long, and somebody is not telling the truth here. And I think that you need to do that. So, moving on, the 7A tonight. The way I read Robinson Park, the neighborhood kids, when Art was there, they only rented the building. Now, it sounds as though they're getting the entire park. And I know when my little guy was, before he went to school, we were up there a lot. And I think it will be, you know, terrible if the neighborhood kids can't use their own park.
No, they could still use the park. It's open to the public.
So, okay. Next one is 7C, the Safer Grant. Back a decade or so ago, we could not be efficient as a fire company because the Harrison Avenue Bridge could not be utilized by the weight of a fire truck. But that bridge, as we all know, has been replaced now for over a year. And I have not seen any efficiency study done of the fire department. And I think that that's critical. Are we doing it the most efficient way that we can? And do we really need to add 10 more people? And on the other, this EMT stuff I just heard about, so I'm not sure that we need that either. But then, I thought, as to the tax rates on the agenda tonight, I hope that if the budget is, you're not going to pass these, that you put them on the table until the budget is approved? Is that?
Well, they, nothing is changing other than the payroll preparation tax. And I expect that that will stay in.
And, so you are going to go ahead and prove that before the budget is approved?
Well, they're, so they're on the agenda for three weeks because they're ordinances.
Yes.
But it doesn't, it doesn't, since we're not changing anything in the budget, it doesn't make any difference.
And on H, oh, well, no. The other, the other thing I had is, I don't know, just very frustrated that things don't seem to be happening. And I hope that we can get moving. And I don't agree with Ms. Frannis that we're on Easy Street. I think it's going to be difficult. And I've only got 18 seconds, so I will now say that I hope that you all find many things to be thankful for this Thursday, and enjoy the holiday.
Thank you. You as well. Have a good night.
Tom Coyne Menucha. I went to the DPW to have a problem resolved. I brought city sewer maps that I had, made copies of them, actually laid out the water flow problems that I had for our direct neighborhood. I'm happy to respond that within two days of me bringing him to the Sewer Authority, one of the Sewer Authority personnel reached out to me, this was just before Thanksgiving, to come out and do a site survey to see what was going on, because I had laid out all of the, not only the sewer maps, but water flows that were causing impacts on multiple properties. He had wanted to schedule an appointment for him and a engineer to come out in the following week. But due to me being, me being out of town for one of those days and then being on vacation, it actually was delayed for two weeks, which is more than acceptable. They came out, took a look at the site, and within the next week, were out there with the crews cleaning the wastewater drains. Part of the issues that I had talked about were the neighbors' basements were being flooded because of the diversion of basically a half a block of city's water being kicked out onto the street. When they pulled the drain covers and took a look at them, when the road was paved seven and a half years ago, a piece of the blacktop had actually been dumped or fell into the wastewater system while they were re-milling the surface. That remained in there. So, there was a chunk of two-foot by about one and a half-foot roadway surface that was directly laying over the pipe and filling it up with silt. They removed that, and I hope everything is going to be completely resolved the next time, because they cleared the three drains that were slowly draining on the block. They had talked about increasing the car pipe, but naturally, both of us agreed that that would be improper to do with the cold coming on, because putting the tarmac on it would just, with the cold patch and expansion because of the snow, just makes a weak point which would cause it to break off and more likely destroy the work. But hopefully, the repair of these sewer drains, of these stormwater drains, will resolve the situation completely. I stopped in, and I caught up with Mr. Preambo before the last caucus, because even though I was going out of town, I wanted to personally commend his personnel for their job, their efficiency, for them reaching out, and for their conscientious nature in taking care of an issue. That was, that's issue number one. Number two is on this budget. First of all, for the fire department and the police department contracts. In the next contract going forward, I think it would be prudent to put in a date in there that it be negotiated and end in the third quarter. It should not end on the end of December, because that way you are negotiating a budget and unknown numbers over a period of time to make a budget that you have no idea. If the contract ended six months or three months before the budget would have to be in, you would have the foresight when that final agreement was made to know what your numbers are going to be. Now, because it ends at the same time, at the same time as budget, and you aren't privy to all of the information from those negotiations, you have no idea what those perspective changes are going to end up to be, to be in the end. It would be more prudent, rather than December 31st for the contract to end, have it end on August 31st for the next contract, which then would give you a negotiation period to get those numbers. I'm not adverse to the city increasing budgets, especially not for the Department of Public Works. But I am conscientious, the fact that you are working blind with numbers that are presented to you, and in this case, adjustments being made in the second presentation of the budget, how can you actually make a reasonable decision when we have one more meeting? And that meeting is where we get to see some of the adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice night. Would anyone else like to address council? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Councilman Schuster, do you have any motions or comments this evening?
I think, I mean, the only comment I guess I have tonight is, there was a property at Senior Avenue I put in for the last couple of weeks. I've heard there hasn't been anything done with that property, so if we could send that in again. As for the budget, do you think it would be appropriate for me to discuss at this point in time, or wait till on the question?
It's up to you. Wait till on the question. It doesn't matter.
I'll wait till on the question for that one. So, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman McAndrew, any motions or comments this evening?
Yes. Over on Matt Avenue alongside the Chamberlain Plant, there's a huge hole with metal plates over it. First of all, I don't know what, why the hole's there. Maybe it's a utility company. Could we please investigate? Because with winter fastly approaching, that would wreak havoc on plows trying to get over there. That's a nightmare. So, Mr. Waldenberg, could you just reach out to somebody to see who's responsible for that hole and the metal plates and?
Mr. McAndrew, just to jump into, I did reach out to, last Thursday morning before, yeah, because it was the day that DPW was in here, I reached out to DPW Director Preambo, and he was going to reach out to the water company, because that was their project where they put the stuff over.
Thank you. The second inquiry won't hurt, I believe. Thanks.
We'll handle it.
Councilman Donahue. So, last week, you know, we bring this up all the time. So, I brought up job descriptions while Mr. West was here, and he said, "You know what? I'll get them to you." And we wanted job descriptions for the people that have already been here. I especially want job descriptions for all the proposed new hires. Definitely. So, and then we talked about increases, increases. So, and they said they're all performance-based. So, I asked this other question that I didn't have yet to receive an answer for. I asked if there were any formal evaluations of any employee in any capacity of any department done last year. So, I didn't get an answer yet. So, could you please, well, I ask in person, so maybe we can send an email as a reminder with both questions?
I will, sir.
Thank you. That is all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments this evening?
Just two citizen complaints that I wanted to bring up. Someone had contacted me yesterday. I believe they reached out to some other departments, but I'd like to make sure that we send, that we send correspondents, correspondences to them as well regarding an issue of illegal tire dumping that's happening on Skyview Drive near Saginaw. So, I believe she left a message for our office, too. I just want to make sure that we, that we reach out to the departments to get over there and see what's happening, find out who owns the property where the dumping, where the dumping is occurring. And then the other thing that I wanted to check on, because we had received an update on the 400 block of East Gibson Street, where there's overgrown bushes and, that are, you know, covering the sidewalk and going into, into the roadway, as well as a boat and some other vehicles that are, that are parked near there. The update only gave us a list of partial owners. It was like three owners. I can't find where it is now, but that was all that it included. So, I'd like to know if violations were issued to those owners, how there are three people that are joined in the ownership of that property, and what's going to be done about it. So, Mr. Waldenberg, if you can reach out again about that, that property, I appreciate it. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments tonight?
No, I'll save my comments for agenda items.
Thank you. Just two things, or three things, rather. We did receive an OECD salary breakdown by Funding Stream from Eileen Cipriani, the executive director of OECD. Trying to read and understand the OECD budget this year was very, very difficult, so we'll include that in third order for next week. The police department responded to and followed up on an abandoned vehicle that neighbors were complaining about in the 400 block of Phelps Street. Neighbors had indicated that the vehicle was tagged but remained on the street, so that's being taken care of. And the last thing I wanted to mention was the, the lights at Nell Park. I know that Ms. Jeffries mentioned it. I had an opportunity to go through with my children recently, and they have done an absolutely phenomenal job this year. There are more lights. They're in, are in different locations. It's the best, I think, I've ever seen it look. And that's a credit to the Recreation Authority Board, Jerry Smurl, Bob Gatins, and the Parks and Recreation Department and the employees in that department. They have done a very, very good job, and it's a huge asset to the city. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance, creating and establishing special city account number, as noted and titled, ARP Funds for the receipt of and disbursement of monies from the American Rescue Plan Funds.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
Sure moved.
Second.
On the question? Yes, on the question. Solicitor Hayes, if you can look into, I've asked this question, but I've not received an answer yet. What is the process for, when, okay, so we've, I don't think we've officially accepted this money, and I don't know if we have to by legis, like by ordinance or by resolution. So, that's the first question, is how that works, if we have to officially accept it by, city council has to accept it. And then the second thing is, if we have to accept or vote on some sort of plan on how to spend these funds, or do we do that piece, will council do that piecemeal as they come forward? We've received a tentative plan from the mayor, but I just want to make sure that council has a say in this process in terms of, you know, voting on it at some point. So, if you could look.
With Fidelity, Fidelity was going to hold the funds, so I don't know why, you know?
I think the Fidelity, so from what I understand, the Fidelity is the bank account in which the funds were deposited. I think this is to create a city line item, a fund line item, where you could put that money in and then pay it out. I don't know if we could pay out out of the Fidelity account. But in, just discussions I've had with Larry West, I think, in terms of the plan on how we're going to spend this, more than likely, it's going to be done, not as one, so we'll get lost revenue first, but it will probably be done quarterly instead of all at once. So, we'll have a batch, you know, for the first quarter of the year, a batch for the second quarter of the year. And then, and that, I was told that council will be a part of that process.
Okay. Good. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance, repealing one file of the council, number 147, 1986, entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the General Revenue by Imposing a Tax at the Rate of Two Mills Upon the Privilege of Operating or Conducting Business in the City of Scranton as Measured by the Gross Receipts Therefrom, Requiring Registration and Payment of the Tax as Condition to the Conducting of Such Business, Providing for the Levy and Collection of Such Tax, Prescribing Such Requirements for Returns and Records, Conferring Powers and Duties Upon the Tax Collector, and Imposing Penalties, and II, File of the Council, number 98, 1976, as Amended, and Imposing a Mercantile License Tax of Two Mills for the Year 1987, and..." and Annually Thereafter upon persons engaging in certain occupations and businesses therein, providing for its levy and collection and for the issuance of mercantile licenses, conferring and imposing powers and duties upon the tax collector of the City of Scranton, and imposing penalties effective January 1st, 1987, and adopting an ordinance for the general revenue by imposing a payroll tax on the amount of payroll expense generated as a result of the business conducting business activity within the city and to be levied at a rate of .2787 percent, requiring registration and payment of the tax as condition to the conducting of such business, providing for the levy and collection of such tax, prescribing such requirements for returns and records, conferring powers and duties upon the tax collector, and imposing penalties.
This time I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance, amending file of the council number 95, 2015, an ordinance entitled, Amending File of the Council Number 79 of 2015, an ordinance amending file of the council number 145, 2007, entitled, An Ordinance Renaming the Emergency and Municipal Services Tax to Local Services Tax, and by imposing a withholding of $52 for the calendar year 2015, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter by increasing the local services tax withholding from $52 to $156 for the calendar year 2015, and providing for the exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2015 under and pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act, Act 511 of 1965, PL 1257, 53 PS, Sequence 6924.101 at SEC, and the Municipalities Recovery Act, Act 47 of 1987, PL 246, 53 PS, Sequence 157, 11701.101 at SEC, and their respective amendments effective retroactive to January 1st, 2022. This tax enables the City of Scranton to continue to levy the local services tax at the fiscal year 2020 rate for fiscal year 2021, for a total maximum local services rate at $156 for the fiscal year 2022, effective January 1st, 2022.
This time I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5E for introduction and ordinance, amending file of the council number 11, 1976, entitled, An Ordinance as Amended, Enacting, Imposing a Tax for General Revenue Purposes in the Amount of 2% on Earned Income and Net Profits on Persons, Individuals, Associations, and Businesses Who Are Residents of the City of Scranton or Non-Residents of the City of Scranton for Work Done, Services Performed, or Businesses Conducted Within the City of Scranton, Requiring the Filing of Returns by Taxpayers Subject to the Tax, Requiring Employers to Collect the Tax at Source, Providing for the Administration, Collection, and Enforcement of the Said Tax, and imposing penalties for the violations by reenacting the imposition of the Wage Tax at 2 and 4 tenths percent on earned income for residents and 1% on earned income for non-residents of the City of Scranton for work done, services performed, or business conducted within the City of Scranton for the year 2022, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter.
This time I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5F for introduction and ordinance, amending file of the council number 6, 1976, entitled, An Ordinance as Amended, Imposing a Tax for General Revenue Purposes on the Transfer of Real Property Situate Within the City of Scranton, Prescribing and Regulating the Method of Evidencing the Payment of Such Tax, Conferring Powers and Imposing Duties upon Certain Persons, and Providing Penalties by imposing the Rate of the Realty Transfer Tax at 2 and 2 tenths percent.
This time I'll entertain a motion that I, I'm sorry.
For calendar year 2022, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter.
This time I'll entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5G for introduction and ordinance, amending file of the council number 100, 1976, entitled, An Ordinance as Amended, Levying General and Special Taxes for the Fiscal Year 1977 by Setting the Millage for the Year 2022, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter.
This time I'll entertain a motion that Item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5H for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the City of Scranton to execute and enter into a contract with Answer Advisory and Government Services Group, Inc., to provide consulting services associated with American Rescue Plan Act.
This time I'll entertain a motion that Item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I think we need clarification on this piece of legislation. The rubric is hard to understand. They have a scoring. They score the vendors, but it's hard to tell how they came up with that score, so that would be my first question. The second question is, it's hard to tell who is the lowest bidder here. There are several vendors, and they list the cost. For example, project executive for the Answer Advisory that the administration has chosen is $300 an hour, then there's a position $265 an hour. So, if we could clarify that, Mr. Volenberg, that would be number one. Number two, in the budget, in the 2022 budget, we're hiring an ARPA Executive Director at $80,000. And it would seem to me, after reading some of the things in this proposal where we're going to hire a consultant to help us with the American Rescue Plan Act, we're also hiring an executive director, and it seems like the two positions may be doing some of the same functions. So, I want to clarify that as well. So, we, as everyone knows, we've received over $68.5 million in ARP funding. We're going to spend roughly $2.3 million on this company to do several things. The general requirements are on page 10. I just want to make sure we're not, there's not double work going on here. Anyone else?
And just on the question, just to add to that, in addition to the ARPA Director, we also have an ARPA Citizens Outreach Coordinator, and then also a ARP SRA staff that are additions to our budget. So, I have the same concerns as Mr. Vaughn, is, you know, we're spending this money on this company, but then also creating this staff. It does come out of, you know, the recovery plan, rescue plan funds, but at the same time, those funds, we need to maximize those use to get the most bang for our buck there.
I would also echo those concerns.
So, Mr. Volenberg, can you relay that to the administration and see if we can get an answer before next week, since this is a resolution?
I will, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5I for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the City of Scranton to execute and enter into a contract with effective LLC to provide interpretation and translation services for the Scranton Police Department.
This time I'll entertain a motion that Item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
On the question? On the question, and I should have asked this when Chief Nemecha was here, but Mr. Volenberg, prior to next week, can we find out with the current provider of this service, how much we've paid them in the past and how many calls we get using the service on an average, on a yearly basis? Just so I have an idea.
I will, Mr. Vaughn.
Anybody else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5J for introduction, a resolution, accepting a donation provided to the City of Scranton by Lamar Advertising Company for five billboards that provided the message of a free COVID and flu clinic in the City of Scranton.
This time I'll entertain a motion that Item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? Although, oh, I'm sorry.
On the question, I just want to add that, you know, I want to thank Lamar Advertising for putting this out there. It's important that the public is aware of opportunities like these. It's still really important and vital that people get both their COVID and their flu vaccinations, so I just wanted to place an emphasis on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, File the Council Number 91, 2021, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a tax and revenue anticipation note, series of 2022, in the principal amount not to exceed $10 million, provided for the date-to-date interest rate, maturity date, redemption provisions, payment, and place of payment in respect of the note. Accepting the proposal attached heretofore as Exhibit B from financial institution named therein for the purchase of the note, naming a sinking fund depository paying agent, authorizing the proper officers of the city to execute and deliver the note and certain other documents and certificates in connection therewith, authorizing and directing the preparation, certification, and filing of the necessary documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, setting forth a form of the note.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
6B, reading by title, File the Council Number 92, 2021, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the City of Scranton and Rubicon Global LLC to provide smart waste recycling data collection and operations management system for the Department of Public Works' solid waste and recycling fleet.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, just a couple of things that I noticed here. First is disclosure forms were not filled out. It was signed at the bottom, but there was no answers to the disclosures. So, Mr. Volenberg, would we be able to look into that? Also, there was no pricing page involved in this. And then, lastly, they did mention in their proposal that there were, where to go? They said that using data from the pilot program that was brought up last week, Rubicon's preliminary analysis indicates the city has the opportunity to realize $519,000 in cost savings annually with the technology. Would we be able to get justification for that number, exactly where those savings are going to come from? And that's all I have for right now.
I will, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, also on the question, thanks, Kyle, for bringing up the justification for those savings. I also received some questions regarding the reliability of the services, and at the school district, they went through something similar, which never really panned out with the promises that were given in the beginning. Can we reach out to Mr. Priambo and ask if they, what the results of the pilot program are, and if the service was reliable, or if there's any kind of percentage of reliability involved with that?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
On the question, I just want to add, I wasn't here, I wasn't present last week when this piece was introduced, but I know this has been a thought for quite some time that they would have this initiative and be able to collect this data, and I'm supportive of it. I think that it'll be a great way to, you know, keep track of the garage trucks, but I was also happy to hear from Director Priambo about the route optimization, which I believe is where some of those cost savings may come in, if I remember correctly, and so I'm really interested in seeing the results of that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I also share the same concerns that Councilman Dunneho and Schuster have. Where's the backup for this $500,000 projected savings on the pilot? I vaguely remember the pilot even happening, and we didn't hear anything until now, so I would definitely like some backup on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
6C, reading by title, File the Council Number 93, 2021, an ordinance appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2022, to and including December 31st, 2022, by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year 2022.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6C. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6C pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'd just like to express that I've had a lot of frustration regarding this budget from actually receiving it on the day I was supposed to receive it up until tonight. And ever since I've received this budget, I've gone through it every night. I've taken a look at the numbers, and tonight we were handed changes at the start of the meeting that we reviewed on the spot, and there were three areas of three increases that I would have had questions on. I would have been prepared to come with questions on, but I was just giving them tonight. I think council as a whole has expressed a lot of concerns with a lot of moving numbers from the CBAs to, you know, we're moving into the payroll prep tax this year, which might not be as accurate as we think, you know what I mean? That's yet to be seen. But there's too many moving numbers here, and I would just like to say that, you know, having changes given to us on the fly isn't acceptable, and it's not a way we should be moving forward with this budget. And I would like to say, I am thankful for the process we've used this year. I'm glad that the department heads have come in. I thought we had very good conversations, and we got to tease this out, but the format of this is just not acceptable. And I think some of the men that were here tonight, you know, presenting this, I don't think it's an error on their part. I think it's in the preparation of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, I have a problem with the changes also, and we're pretty much told there's more coming. So, I'm disappointed with that aspect of the budget.
Thank you.
On the question, probably over the last 10 days or so, I've spent between 40 and 50 hours looking at spreadsheets, typing up my own spreadsheets on what was given to us, and I could say that basically what's on our agenda tonight is not accurate. It is not accurate at all, and there are a lot of fixes that need to be made. We're working through, trying to figure out what those fixes are, and then once we have those fixes, we could actually have a baseline where then we could discuss the policy implications of what is actually in here, including, you know, new positions, any raises involved, any increases in capital expenditures. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. I know that there was some concern tonight about transparency, so I know that I could guarantee that as soon as we get an idea of what the budget is and where we're at, we will post that as soon as possible. If anyone wants a copy, email to them as soon as we have that information in hand, please send me your email address, and I will send you what we have. That's all I can say at this moment. I mean, we're continuing to work through this. It's a holiday this week, but... It's a holiday this week, but we will continue to work through it. Hopefully, we have better information by, in terms of the salary detail, by Monday. But I am frustrated because for the second year in a row, we were given a budget that was not balanced. And that's all I have for right now.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I agree with the concerns that have already been brought up. I certainly don't want to stay silent on this, or, but I also don't want to, you know, rehash what's already been said. However, I do feel like we're proofreading a draft document when we should instead be looking at the final legislation. And, you know, certainly you can expect potential amendments or changes to be made, but not in such a large scale. And if we weren't to catch some of these errors, then who would? So this is certainly problematic, something that we definitely need to correct for the future and find out where we went wrong in the process and how this could go more smoothly. But I do appreciate that we're trying to get started earlier. We need to bump that further up to an earlier time. And then I would like to continue with bringing department heads in future years because I think that's something that's been effective so far.
Thank you. The budget process for the second year in a row has more holes in it than a piece of Swiss cheese, and I'm not exaggerating. This has been a complete disaster on more than one level. First, the budget for the second year in a row is technically not balanced, as my colleagues pointed out. Now, last year, we might be able to chalk it up to a new mayor and a new administration. What is the excuse this year? A new business administrator? I don't believe it. Mr. Dealey, who is now the Network Systems Manager, has his hands all over this budget. It's time for somebody in this building to get a calculator that works because you're putting all five members of council at a huge disadvantage, and especially the public. These are your tax dollars. And the budget, as Councilman Dunnehoo mentioned, that's on our agenda tonight, is not accurate. The numbers aren't accurate. And that's not bad enough. The columns on spreadsheets that we were given were missing. The detail for the Treasury Department was missing. Some pages are in this document twice. Some positions are listed as non-union when they are in fact union, and vice versa. We were handed a document tonight, soon as I came in, that shows the police department budget is off by $325,063. Tonight, we were handed this. The fire department is off by $155,008. What kind of operation are we running here? And again, I am not exaggerating. If we could chalk this up to a simple mistake, hey, there's a number missing here, I could totally understand that. This is two years in a row. I've been on this council for eight years. I have never seen anything more embarrassing in my entire life, and they should be embarrassed. Mr. West, the mayor, everybody should be embarrassed for the budget that we were presented. Now, that wasn't bad enough that the numbers aren't correct. Let me talk for a minute about our office and the way our office was treated. The process of getting the budget to our office was rushed. It was piecemealed right until the very last minute. We were here past 4:30 on a Friday. That is a recipe for disaster and mistakes. Several line items, there was nothing budgeted in 2021, yet money's being spent, ignoring the wishes of council and the public. In years prior, a narrative was provided which detailed any major increases and changes for each department. That was not included this year and could have prevented many questions that had to be posed. Last year was sloppy, this year is sloppier. Again, I have to be honest, this is the worst I've seen it in eight years, in eight years. And again, chalk it up last year to a new administration, I can understand that. This year is totally unacceptable. And I have to point it out because it puts all of us in a very precarious position moving forward. Because now, this isn't correct, the police and fire department budget isn't correct? As Councilman Dunnehoo said, he's looking at 5,000 spreadsheets. I'm looking at spreadsheets. We don't know what numbers are correct and incorrect, and they're all apparently going to have to change. Now, as for the budget itself, outside of all the corrections that we have, last year we made 55 amendments. This year, God knows how many we're going to have to make. Let's step back for a minute and take a look at where we are as a city. We are finally poised to exit Act 47 distress status in January 2022, and this is a good thing because we shed the label of being distressed. But as everyone knows, it doesn't mean that we are out of the woods yet by any stretch of the imagination. Our recovery coordinator detailed in its most recent report that the city will still experience operating deficits through the 2022-2026 projection period. Annual expenditure growth is 2%, and this isn't news to anyone on council or I'm sure anyone in the public, our revenues remain relatively flat. The coordinator is recommending that the city increases its property tax mileage by 20% for the years 2024 to 2026. That is reality. They also state that any expenditure reductions implemented by the city during this period may reduce the percentage property tax mileage rates increase. The mayor, with the budget that she put forward, absent all of the mistakes, which there are many, has put forward a plan that I think is extremely ill-advised, specifically with the hiring of 10 additional firemen through a SAFER grant that will run out in three years. I was not impressed one bit with the answers that I heard tonight from Chief Judge or Mr. West. All told, if this is allowed and this goes through, it adds well over $1 million to our bottom line in year four. Salaries, benefits, pension, on and on. Now, the concerning part for me is this would hit year four at the exact same time that the city would, according to our own recovery coordinator, be expected to raise taxes on the residents of our city. If we approve the plan presented today, first of all, we approve a budget that is not balanced. But if we approve the budget today, outside of it not being balanced, I can almost assure people that taxes will have to be raised higher than 20% over the next several years to cover the cost of all the additional personnel. Ambulance service, EMS service, that's listed in the grant application to hire the additional firemen, that's supposed to sustain these positions. We didn't hear a peep out of them tonight on how that works, but yet we're supposed to approve this and say, we'll figure it out in year four. Well, isn't that the same way that the city has gotten into the position that we're in now, that 30 years later, we're finally shedding distress status? Because we said, there's a grant, let's take it, and let's not worry about year four. We'll figure, according to Mr. West and Mr. Judge, we'll figure that out. We're having discussions about it. Well, that's not what it says in the grant. And that's concerning because what's being relayed to the federal government is not, according to their words tonight, reality. So I have grave concerns, grave concerns, that we would be putting city taxpayers in a precarious financial position when the grant runs out. Now, the conversations that I've had, they've said, well, in year four, we can furlough them. Well, who wants to be furloughed? In a perfect world, anybody would like to add more public safety personnel. But we are not in a position financially, according to our own plan that we have from the recovery coordinator, to do that. And if we were to do that, I think it would be a big mistake. The city's issue is lagging revenues and increasing legacy costs. The mayor's plan will only compound the problem, only compound the problem. Now, they talk about retirements. Who knows? There's a lot of maybes. Maybe this will happen, maybe that will happen. Well, common sense tells you that if your plan is to add an ambulance service, and you're going to add 3,000 calls more per day, in year four, how are you going to furlough 10 firemen? You're going to need that extra personnel with all the different programs that they want to run here. Now, in addition to the plan, the mayor's plan to hire 10 additional firemen, she also plans on adding over a dozen new positions and giving out raises to 39 employees that if you total everything up, including the benefits, adds up to over $1 million. I understand the rationale with some of the raises. I've seen it over the last few years. I understand that some positions are underpaid. Anyone who looks at this with a shred of common sense can see that. But I think that we need to be extremely careful when analyzing these new positions and raises and look not just to next year, but similar to the SAFER grant, look several years down the road. Can the city afford this? As Councilman Dunnehoo has noted here correctly several times, can we sustain it? Everyone is aware, in this building and in the city and around the country, that the price of everything is going up with inflation. This doesn't change for city government. Costs go up, legacy costs increase. Most of it's out of our control. So the question is, can we keep up with it? I think we need to be very careful we're not adding too many positions and raises at one time. I prefer to take a multi-year approach to any increases in raises and non-union staff, which I think would be more pragmatic due to the sensitive nature of our financial condition here in the city. So over the next few weeks, I plan to work closely with fellow council members, the mayor and her administration, to make sure this budget is affordable for the residents of our city. Some may think I'm being too harsh in my initial assessment. They have to understand, we all have full-time jobs outside of being council members. This is not my full-time position. So for me to go through and look at this and find all these mistakes when I have to make a very difficult decision on the financial future of the city is extremely frustrating, not just one year, but for two years. So I don't know what goes on in the BA's office or what goes on in the IT department that's being run by Carl Dealey. Something's got to change here. If this happens in year three, in the private industry, people would be fired over these type of silly mistakes, silly mistakes, that now we have to deal with and change. Anybody else?
Seventh order.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
I make a motion to table Item 6C.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table Item 6C, which is the 2022 operating budget. This ordinance is being tabled until the public hearing can be held on November 30. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, file the Council Number 90, 2021, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with the Deutsch Institute Applied Research Centers for the handicapped for use of the premises known as Robinson Park, located at 98 Mountain Lake Road, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18505, for a three-year period commencing January 1, 2022, and ending December 31, 2024.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Downeheu?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 230, 2021, accepting a donation in the amount of $1,000 to the Scranton Fire Department to be placed in the special city services account, as noted.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Downeheu?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 231, 2021, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to enter into an agreement with the Department of Homeland Security, FEMA, to accept the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response SAFER grant in the amount of $2,596,047.50 to be utilized by the Scranton Fire Department.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
There's been a second. On the question?
On the question, for all those reasons that I've already mentioned tonight and the precarious state of our finances and the plans we have, I absolutely have a good conscience in voting no. Would you like to add 10 firefighters? Yes. In a perfect world, we'd like to add 40 firefighters, but it's what's important. Every discussion I had, especially with the mayor's tax policy group, where we looked at comparable cities in Pennsylvania, we overspend on police and fire and we underspend on everything else. We can't continue to add staff to the fire department when we need to add staff to our EPW department, when we need to add staff in the business administration office, obviously, when we need to add staff to DBW parks and the deal with quality of life, we need home inspectors out there. That's where we need to talk about hiring staff. We can't continue to add to something that we already overpaid for. So for that reason, I'm going to be voting no.
Anyone else on the question?
On the question, I also plan on voting no on this piece of legislation. I'm in agreement with many of the reasons already given, however, you know, I do want to make it clear that I want our city to be safe. I think it's important that our firefighters, our police department, they're well-staffed. We need them to be able to respond to calls. I feel like they are, you know, doing that and fulfilling expectations. I also think it's important that we're fiscally responsible as a city, and I don't see this as a fiscally responsible decision. You know, I don't feel that there's been enough reasoning given for sustainability in the future when this grant does run out. There's no guarantee of getting another grant to pay for the firefighters hired. And I just, I'm thinking long-term in reference to this piece, and I'm not in agreement at this time.
Anyone else on the question?
Yes, as chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I really, really, really wanted to vote yes tonight for this. I love providing opportunity for young men and women who live in the city and prepare them for a career in public safety. I had concerns. Some of them were answered, but my problem was, you know, clear sustainability. I like the fact that, you know, in three years, you could get another grant that would retain them, that's part of the process. But I personally can't take that gamble on behalf of the stakeholders of the city. So I'm very sad to say I'm voting no for this because I was very hopeful, but I didn't get enough clear sustainability presented tonight.
Also, with me, there's many aspects of this plan that I could support. However, we've been given two separate justifications. With the budget right now, there's too many uncertainties for me to be able to support something at this point in time with, should I, I want to, you know, really put an emphasis on, with no solid plan to sustain. So I do encourage, you know, the fire department to look into maybe taking another pass at this into the future when there is a solid plan to sustain. But like I said, with too many uncertainties where we're at in the timing of this, how it goes, I think right now it's going to be a time for me to make a tough choice now so councils don't have to make tougher choices in the future, such as furloughs and tax increases on our citizens.
Thank you. I won't rehash everything because I've stated it a few minutes ago. The bottom line is, as my colleagues stated, there's no clear plan to sustain these positions. Would we like to add more public safety personnel? Of course, every city would. And I appreciate the job that our fire personnel currently do, but to add 10 more positions, although it is under a grant, and not have a clear plan in year four is playing Russian roulette with the city finances. It's a gamble, too many hypotheticals. It's just not something that I can sign my name onto. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Mr. McCandrew?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
No.
Mr. Downeheu?
No.
Mr. Gahn?
No. I hereby declare Item 7C is not adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, file the Council Number 88, 2021, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the City of Scranton and Bedrock Technology, aka Keystone Technology Consulting, LLC, to provide information technology management services.
This piece of legislation is currently tabled. I think we do intend to take it up before the end of the year, but we'd like to talk to the IT department again before we consider it. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.